All right. I call our meeting to order at six oh two on Wednesday, October sixteenth. Uh, could you do the roll call for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson Brenzel here. Well, Chairperson Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Kalish?
Here. I think she was gonna comment when she could.
That's okay.
I gotcha.
I'm sorry to interrupt you guys, but um. So we posted this meeting as a board of trustees meeting to have a joint work session with Planning and Zoning Commission. So. If we don't have a quorum from the Board of Trustees, we probably have a problem.
No, we have a we have a quorum. We have four of them.
We just called both of them.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. I was working down the roll call list with both boards.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to clarify. I know it's really confusing, but this was the simplest way to do it and then to get the ordinance for the zoning changes approved.
Yep, yep, so I'm just working my way down the list with all of them.
All right, sorry about that.
Yep, that's okay. Uh, member Shannon Lee.
Here.
Member Rafferty.
Yeah.
Okay, remember Missa?
Here.
Mayor Colm, now he's absent, we'll see if he comes. Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Here.
Board Member Howard.
Here.
Board Member Hart, right now absent. Board Member Schaefer.
Here.
Board Member Wyman.
Present.
Perfect. Town Administrator Boyd. We know you're here.
She's muted.
She's muted, that's okay. I know she's there, and me. I'm present. Okay, so we do have a forum for both boards.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment before we move into our consent items? All right.
They haven't listened, but if they want to sign up suddenly.
All right. So then we'll move on to consent items, approval of the agenda as it is written.
I saw move.
So I have a first, do I have a second to approve the agenda?
A second, yeah.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed say nay. Approval of the minutes from September eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I approve the minutes.
All right, so you have, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
All right, I have a first and a second, all those in favor approving the minutes from September eighteenth, twenty twenty four, say aye.
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 And you opposed say nay. The minutes have been approved from the September eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. New business, business license for the Mexican restaurant tacos and tortas, Celine E.
Okay, so that would be you. You would like to come up to the podium and talk to the planning board?
Well, if you're gonna speak to it too, sure. You want us up there, Celine?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna give you a layout of the building. And.
You. There you go, yeah.
So my name is Celine, this is my dad, Medina Gonzalez, who's the owner of Taco Celine. Um, so we are looking at this building that Joey owns and we would love to turn it into a Taco Celine. We have three Taco Celine already, one in Aurora, one in Middleton, and one in Denver. We've been in business for twenty-three years, going on twenty-four years. And the idea is to do a Mexican fast food, so we do tacos, tortas, burritos, quesadillas. Um, and with this building, we see potential in having a drive-through as well. Um, we'd stay open a little later than most businesses, probably nine, ten o'clock at night. Um, we don't typically do alcohol, so we don't, we've never done it, and I don't think it's anything that he would like to do. Um, but we would definitely leave the front of the building as dining, um, do a service kitchen and a prep area. Um, we don't do a lot of, I wouldn't say a lot of frying, a lot of like high dangerous things in there, you know, besides just grills, a stove top. Um, we which are only, we make our own salsas, we do everything in-house. Um, so we would keep the same thing going. And then in the back, there's some apartments, we would probably keep those and do like employees that live there. Um, you know, they help take care of the area for us, uh, maintain and also just make sure nothing, nothing goes on while we're not there. Um, mostly family, we do have houses in Aurora that we have family members who work at our restaurant, who also look after our restaurant as well. Um, so we've kind of keep the same idea. Um, our restaurant is very popular, we got best of Mile High last year for best tacos and best fast casual restaurant. So this is definitely something we wanna do. We live in Bennett, we just, well, they moved out here three years ago.
Three, four years ago?
No, no.
About four years ago, yeah. And then, um, I moved out here as well, so we kinda do all the, all the stuff for tacos and tortas. So you'd love to be out there.
Do you do breakfast burritos?
Yes. We do, we do breakfast burritos at our Little Tana and our Denver locations, and they're very popular as well.
Yes.
Uh, approximately, how many would your dining area seat? For to say less in zero. No, no, I believe in, so we're talking to the, the forty-five, sixty.
We're thinking between forty-five to sixty people. Um, we didn't measure it out all the way, but I'm estimating just by looking at this space, between forty-five to sixty. He said, if I could at least get twenty-five to thirty people, we'd be great, but I think we can do forty-five.
If I may say, I think legally, they could probably do seventy-five to even closer to ninety in that space, based on the other restaurants in the area. Meaning they would, I think the, the fire department would allow that, that doesn't mean they wanna have that many.
Right, right.
They would allow that, yeah.
But that's within the, like, max capacity.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then I have a, I have another question. I'm not sure your license application is correct, the business address. It should not, shouldn't that be the proposed business address?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Oh, maybe.
The Iowa address. So you.
We can amend that.
Yeah, you may have to do an amended license application.
Yeah, okay, that's easy.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I do have a question here, though. So it, it's gonna be a restaurant sized kitchen, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, how, how does that fall into, it's gonna have apartments also?
Um, we have other businesses, um, that allow like longevity down there.
Okay.
If you have a business, you can have a caretaker, um, place in the back. And so we have several others like that.
Yeah, it's based on percentage.
Right, referred to, I think, right? I think so, yeah.
And we just approved, we reviewed that in our.
Yep, yeah, so there's several, there's several others in town that have caretakers, like, um, the bar too has a caretaker upstairs.
Okay, so it's considered just like a, a, a family housing or whatever, right?
Yep.
And would be within compliance, like the square footage listed here would be within our compliance.
Right, I believe so, yeah.
Perfect.
For the percentage of business versus percentage of apartment, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so we do allow caretaker housing within a business.
How many, is it, are you looking at one apartment? Or two in that area?
We would change any of the layout, um, so what's existing?
It's already an apartment back there.
Okay.
It's already, so, so one apartment with multiple bedrooms. They may do, they could do three bedrooms, or they could do two bedrooms and a living room, but they could do a three-bedroom apartment.
Okay.
There's a full kitchen already.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so they just divide the space.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh.
Parking shouldn't be, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Parking shouldn't be a, I mean, there's enough parking there. That's within our codes and stuff. Kind of based on how the bank was, yeah.
Yeah, the, I mean, honestly, between the spa and that, they probably have the two best parking lots in town.
Right.
That probably is true.
So makes everybody mad, but yeah.
Yeah. That was the best.
More hot street parking than anybody else.
Yes.
And so if you, if you end up doing a drive-through, that would probably feed into the alley or alley feed and we're all.
Say, how did the drive?
That's how it worked with the original, uh, the bank was in there for the last twenty-five years at least, if not thirty to forty. And they just, yeah, the drive-through's still existing.
Okay.
We just continue the same way.
So you just go in and out.
Yeah.
Okay.
What other items do you guys wanna share with us?
I would share one thing, my husband and I have already had the scope done for the retrap. We are gonna be putting that in as part of the deal, uh, with them, so the grease trap will be done by our company. Um, and we would proceed as soon as we get approval and they start their stuff and get going, and we get the contracts.
Okay.
Are you leasing or selling?
We're leasing it. With potential to sell in the future, I mean, I don't ever wanna put them out, I told them I'd give them a long contract and we'd always give them first option to purchase, so I think there'll be a long business here.
Cool.
Sounds like you're familiar, I mean, like you've got a good business running, so, yeah.
Three of them, that's great, that's great.
We need to keep the same, it's really good food, we're definitely established and we're closer to home.
Sandy has a question, go ahead, Sandy.
Um, what is the address? Joey.
Yeah, she wants to know what the address says, uh, three, two, six Comanche Street.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. The other thing I'd like to bring up is Tim has been doing work for me for some time now, he's awesome, he's a general contractor. And he's gonna talk, start talking to them, because he is a general contractor, about doing work for them, and I've already had him, and he, he's local, so if you have anything you wanna say. I just thought he would be good if you guys had any questions that involved construction. We could maybe.
I do, now, a- as for like the, um, the facing of it and everything, they're gonna like repaint it and stuff.
That I would have to defer to them, but I would imagine they probably would, I don't know, Celine, were you thinking possibly painting?
Probably, yeah, just exterior paint, um, just minor changes, besides the kitchen would be our biggest build-out, I'm thinking. But for the most part, um, besides the kitchen and that drive-through, we'd probably just give it a fresh coat of paint. Um, maybe add some plants or something, some decor in the front, but nothing.
Nothing, well, I did a lot when I did that remodel, that I.
Yeah.
Already got.
Yeah.
And, um, so we already vaulted the ceilings, it's pretty, pretty sharp actually in there, I have to admit, but a little bit, but I would live there, my husband kicks me out, they might have needs to live in. After all this.
She'll be the roommate, she's like, I'll keep an eye on it, it'll be fine. Just three breakfast burritos.
So assuming everything went through, what, um, what's the timeline that you're thinking?
We're hoping the sooner the better, our build-outs before have taken between three to four months. Um, our Aurora one was the longest one, and it was because the city of Aurora Building Department is a little longer, so. Um, but we would definitely start working and moving on it pretty much tomorrow.
Yeah, so we would have to go through the town board at their next meeting in a couple weeks.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, and in between, I would, you know, we'll start doing the building permit application, we'll get that sent into Safe Built. And then they'll have to go through that process, um, so.
If you guys do vote yes, I, I did tell them, and it's, you know, I know it's always a maybe, sort of, but usually when you guys say yes, they vote yes. I think they'd be safe if they got their permitting started to possibly at least know they're moving ahead, doesn't mean they're gonna start to work. But they would be.
Construct a permitting.
Now, now, Safe Built's already been through that building. Right?
Yes.
So, I mean, they're pretty much golden right there, they've already kind of.
Yeah, it's just whatever, whatever plans that they're gonna make, if they have to put in any walls or the, the kitchen equipment.
Bathrooms, like.
Yeah, and if they.
Already there.
Bathroom, bathroom's already there.
I don't think bathrooms are a problem. I don't think you guys really removing walls, it'd probably be more of the building.
Thankfully, what it comes down to, it's like the minor final details.
Some is the fact that Joey's already putting the grease trap in.
Exactly, so.
That's one of the big things, she already had its scope to make sure she could, so, to kind of.
Location.
Fix that roadblock.
Yeah. Like in the parking lot area. So I think we're gonna try to put it as far back to this building to keep the, to, obviously not, if, if, because sometimes you do get some smell from them to keep the smells away from the restaurant.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And I'm gonna ask you, how loved are you when they start naming a restaurant after you?
I used to think it was a curse in the beginning, I think, yeah. I was like ten years old and we started with a food truck, and they're like, you have a roach couch named after you, but now it's okay.
Now it's glamorous.
Now it's great, yeah.
They become a family like Wendy's.
Yeah.
All right, do you guys have any other questions? Questions. All right, uh, do we have a motion to move the business license of tacos, tortas, and celine to the town board for their review and approval?
Is it okay if this address is listed?
With, with the change of the, with amended address? Wait, Sandy?
Yes. I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, Sandy's making a motion.
Sandy's made a motion.
I second.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed say nay. All right, you guys are gonna be moving forward then to with the town, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Good luck.
Yeah, sound open by next Tuesday.
The board can actually, the board. The Board of Trustees can actually vote on that now, since it's published and.
Hot spot.
That would be great to delay them last time, if you guys could do that, we would really appreciate it, because if, we have what, three, four town people? Four?
This second. Move. I second. Taco Tuesday.
Breakfast, breakfast burritos. Okay, so, and Jonathan Schaefer. Well, okay, so, the, the mayor of Pro Tim won't have to do it. Okay, so, uh, of who is here, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes.
Uh, member Schaefer?
Yes.
Member Howard.
Yep.
Um, member Wyman.
Yes.
Okay, it passes four yeses.
Bangs in.
Okay. All right, well, congratulations, we'll start with the building permits.
Thank you.
Okay, that helped to have Ruth on there saying, let's keep moving.
Yeah, thank you, Ruth.
Okay, yeah, okay, you guys don't have to stay, um, we'll be in touch, start filling out the building permit applications and we'll get her started.
Good deal, thank you.
It's okay, you're welcome.
Okay, um. And I don't think anybody's here to speak to the three-ten, three-twelve Cheyenne Street.
Right, so probably a motion to table that one.
All right.
Uh, I wanna talk about it.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead. I think, I think everybody has information about this, um, in their packet, and this is really just to get some feedback on potential rezoning of these two lots for duplex. And so, looking for some feedback, and that would be uh, collectively, it really rests with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but if anybody has any objections, we're just kind of doing an informal poll, nothing official.
Kind of looks like there's a duplex already there.
Yeah, it kind of does, but I, I think what he is planning, and I said, he didn't come to speak to this. Um, I don't think it's actually being used as a duplex right now, I think it's being used as a single-family home.
It's, it's a single family, but there, it's still a duplex.
Yeah.
Moms on one side, son, son and brother's on the other side.
Yeah, so I think he's wanting to like revamp it or add a piece.
Make it official.
Make it official, yeah, because right now it is just three-ten.
And it says that three-twelve doesn't exist yet.
It doesn't exist yet. Yes, and so that, I think that is his hope.
Add on to that.
Yes, and so.
Is he planning to build another duplex, so there'll be two duplexes side by side?
It appears, um, yeah, yeah, that he has, wants to build.
A permit and build, a duplex, so take down what's there.
I, yeah, I think so, but like I said, he didn't, I, I asked him to, tried to get him to come.
Take down what?
So you're taking.
Take down this.
I'm not sure if he wants to take that one down and build a new one, or.
Based on this, it says Sun Valley Contractors has been approached to permit and build a duplex.
So I'm thinking a second one maybe, and make it three-ten and three-twelve. Like I said, he didn't.
Without knowing.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Is there some space there now?
Okay, well.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at, if you look at the, the picture I sent, picture put on there, um, you can see that there's space there where the one building is, and then there's space with it.
Yeah.
It's pretty close to the Masonic Lodge, isn't it? What's, I wonder what the boundaries are. Cause it, cause in this one picture, it looks like there's a, a pink square, the very last page.
And if you go on this first page of the on the property card I pulled you, that dark square is its spot, that is three-ten. Jonathan, it'll set between the Masonic Lodge and the other duplexes that are already there, if you're setting in Coyote Market's gas pumps looking at the alley, you're looking at the lot right there.
All right, so, one of that open spaces, that was way back when, when the first, I first built that first duplex. Their intentions was to build more of the one right there. For the near circle.
Yeah, so I think that's maybe where they're going now.
Is it gonna be within the, the boundaries that we've set up, or is it gonna need a special permit?
Well, until they're here to talk about it, I think here's the question, Ruth, was your question whether or not we would even entertain it if the person was here?
Yes, I mean, they're gonna, our direction so far is for them to apply for rezoning in order to do whatever project they're gonna do, and so, it costs money, time, they have to do a lot of work to do that, so before it was definitive, we wanted to hear any feedback or concern you all would have with moving forward.
Well, Ruth, I, I think we, we need more information on this before we can really even I mean, uh, cause it's a good question, I mean, are, are they, it's so vague, are they planning on tearing down the, the original one that's already there and rebuilding on top of that, and then adding to three-ten? That, I mean, those are the kind of questions I would ask before, I mean, I have no problem, and, and I don't know how you guys feel, but I don't have any problem with them putting the duplexes in, but it, it just depends on what the whole plan.
Yes, overall, we would be, uh, open to rezoning that. Um, we don't have a problem with the rezoning part, we just need more information before we take any action.
Well, that's fair.
Okay. And. Did you, did you wanted to say?
Are you asking me if I had something?
No, Sandy.
Oh.
Two of three, right behind his property pictures, there's two squares at the bottom, what are those? Is that like three-ten and then he wants to do three-twelve right next to it?
Sandy, are you sitting away from your computer, you're very muffled.
Well, clearly, I'm right next to it, but it is an iPad, so it could be different.
Oh. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what the lots hold, because I don't, if someone else knows what those are.
What's up?
I think, were you asking Sandy about the lots that were like across streets?
Yeah, if you look behind, look on the next page, page two.
Page two, okay.
The bottom. There's two squares right there, one says main, one said new, or.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, this is just what I pulled up on the property um card that the county has.
I just. And part of the issue is we kind of changed our coding or zoning that it, I know it is, we've kind of resumed it, I agree, including mobile phones. Something else, I mean, is that part of the issue also? That we don't really.
I don't know. Yes, that's part of it.
Okay. That's what Ruth says, yes.
So what was that?
But it, just so everybody understands, they still have to come in with the full-blown application, showing setbacks, dimensions, massing, everything else, it's just the issue of rezoning because that's really a legislative change, and we have to amend our zoning map and you know, it's a substantial you know, undertaking, so that's all.
Well, and I don't think anybody has said we're opposed to reviewing it when they're actually here to answer the questions, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think we should just go ahead and table this for tonight until we can have all parties present to move forward.
I agree, I move, we read table, they're not read table, I move read page, you'll be, you'll need, uh, three-ten, three-twelve Cheyenne Street.
And we have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Motion in a second, all those, or all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed say nay, all right, six oh. So now we're going into our old business.
Yep, so this is the joint between everybody.
All right.
So, um so last, at the, um, town board meeting we had, um, and the ordinance came up, and so you have two things in the end here, so you have the, the first one with the colors, this is what, um, because when you got the ordinance last time, you only had half the chart, you didn't have the whole chart. Um, hence the reason Joey was like, where's restaurants and things, well, that's because the old chart wasn't there. So the, this one with the colors, I highlighted them, they're kind of, they're easy to see on the computer. Um, but so anything that was changed from what it was is in pink. So like automotive salesman repair, change the, the town center and, um, and professional or whatever to um, special review, bar tavern, uh, town center became special review, permitted permit, whatever. Uh, so you can kind of see the pink ones were the ones where they, the, the planning board, uh, changed them. The blue ones were removed because you saw at no point to have heavy industrial when you already have a heavy industrial section. Um, and home occupation, that was changed. Um, caregiver operations, um, that was done because, um of how the, the marijuana laws have changed, um, and especially a medical provider, um.
Just, just so I'm clear, why did, why did we remove home occupation?
Um, because it should be in residential, because it's home.
This is the non-residential.
This is the non-residential section, and home occupation should be in the residential section.
Right, top is, does table a non-residential?
Yeah.
What about I got a question now, what about the nursing house, and what's define this council?
Uh, Kim, you wanna handle town center?
As, handle town center as far as what?
Explain it to Trevor, he wants to know exactly the boundaries of town center.
Town center would essentially be from Arapahoe up to about Echo.
And it's just eighty-six frontage, is that?
Yes, yes, just eighty-six.
That's our main street area, Trevor, right down eighty-six, right through the middle of town.
I answered it pretty well.
Um. Yeah, so the other things, um with pet analysts, they also added grooming boarding as a possibility. Um, took out residential dwelling unit, took out single-family dwelling unit, because that's whatever. Um, and then they actually added a line for, uh, food truck. Um, so, and then the ones in gray, those were the additions, um, that we've added. Um, and then because, um we needed to add definitions for, um, medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, medical marijuana caregiver and natural medicine dispensary, because that's a new thing in Colorado, is the natural medicine dispensary, um, which has to do with psilocybin. Um, so, uh, mushrooms.
I know, PNS stands for.
The county's already addressed it.
Permitted and special use, permitted and special use.
And the asterisk.
Is a no.
And so why are caregiver operations a no? I thought they were permitted.
They should be, yes.
So that's a.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that's a, that's a typo, they should be permitted, yes.
And so we got town center, what is?
And so we got Town Center, what is CP again?
Oh, CP is commercial professional. And then LI is light industrial, HI is heavy industrial, and PD is, um, uh, plant, uh, plant development. So if someone were to come in and want to do a whole little housing with grocery stores or whatever. Oh, see if it's fixed on this one.
And this wasn't, this wasn't the same chart we saw or orbiting.
No, that wasn't a full, no, that wasn't a full one.
Saw the first half, you did not see the second half. Yeah.
CP is commercial what?
Commercial professional.
Commercial professional.
And actually, this one is. Oh, yeah. So, oh, see, and here on the top of this one, um, the one that's in there, it says, no marijuana caregiver operations are permitted to use in all areas of town, subject to Colorado law. So, that is on the ordinance one. So, uh, it just wasn't on this, this version. Um, and then, uh, definitions, we, the, the board was adding was, um, that were not in the code, was, um, ADU sec- second dwelling unit, commercial farming greenhouse, non-commercial greenhouse, riding academy, riding arena, dude ranch, thaw mill, and water reservoir. We did not have those in our code. Um, but felt that they, uh, should be if they ever come up. Um, and so then, I took the revised, um, chart of this, because you had the first half, you did not have the second half in the ordinance when you were given it at, at your meeting, so now it has both halves for you to look at. Um, if you so wish to pass the ordinance as it is now, revised and better. So if the town board has any questions for the planning board about what's in there, that's what the purpose of this was, is to make sure we have clarification if there's any questions or et cetera.
So, and just so you guys understand, when, when we got this, that the board meeting, retail wasn't on there.
Right, yeah.
So there's a concern, I'm there to, uh, I think there's one other concern that we have. And then a concern, or I guess a concern I have, this is just me, is, um, the asterisk on the fire station. And part of it is I go off of, you know, Town Center of Castle Rock, where they have a fire station.
Right, right, in Town Center.
And I guess from my standpoint is, when it comes to public safety, I wouldn't, I wouldn't lock them out.
Right.
You know, they have to go through a review, but, but, um, I won't give them the pa- you know, give them or a special review, I guess is where I was. And then the only other thing that we're trying to figure out, and I think this will come more from your, your direction if I understood right, is that some of the businesses that are there and that have been there, if there is coming from, I think it has to come from you, the ordinance, where grandfathers sit me in. So if I sell, if, say I go down and I buy the car dealership, and I work the deal to buy the car dealership, it does be no good to go through six months of trying to buy a car dealership, to then have to come up in front of this board and have them tell me, we're not gonna approve you, because we have to approve it. So, I guess some.
And, and you would keep it a car dealership?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, the discussion was that if you bought it to use it as the same thing, it would stay.
You didn't have to go through all of.
If you took, like, say, the bar and you turned it into a bookstore.
You couldn't.
You would, you would have to come back to us to turn it back into a bar.
Okay.
But if you, if you, if it is a bar and you're buying it to run it as a bar, staying a bar.
That was, yeah, my apologies, that was.
Yeah, no, no.
Trevor, that's a good question.
We kind of, we kind of hashed that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I'll back up and say that I'm very grateful of the hours and the efforts that you guys have spent. Because every time I get like, I have, even, I'm happy to be in the same state as this meeting today. Um, so, I mean, thank you so much. So, uh, uh, yeah.
That did make me think though. Um, we don't have law enforcement. I mean, if we're talking fire departments, should we have law enforcement?
Well, that, that's something we can always go back and.
We can amend it later, yes.
Yeah, we're here now, so let's.
Well, can I, can I address the fire station question real quick?
Sure.
I believe, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, I believe our reasoning on that was, we already have a fire station right on the edge of Town Center. If we grob enough to need a second one, or that one gets old enough to need to be replaced, we would prefer them to stay right outside of Town Center on either end of the town. Still within, you know, very reasonable distances of the existing fire station. I, I believe that was our.
So what if the town grows around the fire station?
Then it will be in Town Center. We have a defined Town Center, which is old town.
It's just that, up to Echo, like from down there, up to Echo, but it could be, right, I mean, which is what, three blocks?
Basically, five planes to Echo Sulu.
Town Center should be viewed more as an economic development area for businesses that are gonna bring in income or revenue to the town. You know, you don't want to stick them on the outskirts of town. And when you put a fire station in Kiowa right in the middle of town, this is just my opinion. That's also a lot of houses that back up to that Town Center too. So, if I was somebody that lived in those houses behind Town Center, I would rather than be on the outskirts of town and taking off out of that house in the middle of the night from outskirts of town than directly behind my house.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I believe that's why we said not in Town Center.
Okay, yeah.
Would we do the same with the police station?
Yes. I believe so.
Although, the police station before was in Town Hall, and we are not in Town Center.
But, it wasn't. Two thousand, it wasn't that long ago.
That was in the old main building.
In the center, Town Center, it was Debbie Oldham's office, so it was a police. So just, I mean, a- as much as, oh yeah, it doesn't now, but.
I mean, you, we could, this is just me, we could change it. Uh, where's the fire station? I mean, you could add fire station slash emergency service slash police. Yeah, I mean, we, we, you could just add a line to it because they're all emergency response kind of things, but that's up to you.
So we, we could change where it says, uh, fire station, that could, it could be emergency services, right?
That's up to you.
Rename it and then define emergency services as fire and police, KMS.
Yeah.
But the one thing, the difference is though, like, if we start a police department again, it would be under the town, so I mean, the building here would make some sense, and so I'm not sure if we.
Building is not in.
But we're not Town Center.
Right, but if it was, I mean, could we put special?
There's, there's no harm in saying special use, that gives us an option of looking, of changing and looking at it in the future. Uh, expanding Town Center, and then you don't have to go back and reset.
And you want it defined.
And we do the boundaries of Town Center, police.
Not for a while.
Yeah.
Eventually.
There, there's a lot involved in that.
Yes.
A lot.
A lot, okay, so, so you want to change fire station to emergency services, have that defined as like police, fire, ambulance.
Yeah, medical emergency.
Okay, emergency responders. Okay, and so you want to change that first one to an S then?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I have a question. The only way we can get revenue is from it, anything being within Town Center.
No, no.
Boundaries, no?
No, has to be within town.
Within town.
So think of it as.
But Town Center is kind of the main street.
Yes, and it was, kind of brings people in, so it's like, think about if you went to Estes Park, you'd all walk the main street. And those businesses, they're on the sides, and they get some business, but not the same.
It's like Manitou, you walk downtown Manitou versus, okay.
So, the purpose is to try to make sure you've got something that brings everybody there and walking distance.
Like old Town Center.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, cool.
Other question?
Yep.
Down here at the bottom, it says, uh, wireless telecommunications equipment. And then green, it says needs definition. I don't see a green on the key here.
What's that about?
Oh, um, yes.
I'm not sure we know that.
Yeah, that was just a note to remember that we needed to have a definition for that in our code. So, that's what that is. It has to be defined, isn't that something that has to be defined more than by state?
Yes, I believe so.
Versus our definition.
Yeah.
So, we will make sure that that is actually in the code too. That was it, that was a note for me, us to remember to put it in there.
So, so, if, if this comes to us to pass the resolution, the resolution has, is basically approving this stuff that we're talking about.
Right.
That we still can't pass because we need to have a definition and we need to change the fire to EMAD.
Right, so.
Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Is that, is that true, Ruth, that we have to wait till the next meeting?
So, we can, well, the board of trustees can pass the ordinance subject to, um, including, you know, the wireless and changing the emergency services definition. As long as, you know, my recommendation would be, we'll see how comprehensive the changes are before I can really give direction. If that's okay with everybody, but so far those two things are very manageable.
I just don't know that I'm comfortable passing a resolution when we don't know how extensive the changes would be.
Well, at this point, you have to. The definition.
They have two, two.
We have two changes right now. Changing it to emergency services instead of just fire station and adding the definition. And having the definition for the wireless telecommunications equipment.
And since it's kind of a joint workshop deal, I think from our standpoint, maybe I'll speak out loud, but or anyway, that we kind of understand, we're on agree, agreeance of the, uh, agreement on the changes. And obviously, if you guys, but, ask me to change this, then we could probably, I, I think we could probably pass it, no, those changes, you know, right here.
Go ahead, Terry.
Terry.
I'm not uncomfortable, um, going ahead and passing it with the amendments. And under the wireless telecommunications, that is special review. So, nothing is a given that, yeah, I mean, if they want to come in here with a fifty foot tower and put it in the middle of town, they have to get a special review before they do that.
Yeah.
So, that's why I would be comfortable going ahead and passing it. And then the definitions can be put in there. If it was permitted, I have a different opinion.
That's a good point, thank you.
We did try to keep it special more often than not to rule on the side of
Right.
conservative, other than just kind of.
Well, I see restaurants are in there now.
Yeah, like I said, you're missing the second half of the chart.
Yeah. Oh, wow, okay.
I'm, I'm just running through businesses again, and do we need post office?
Yeah, well, because they're outside of Town Center.
But do we need to have something for them? I'm just asking.
No, because they're not, they're not coming back into Town Center.
Okay.
I don't see that. They were in Town Center. They were.
But they've built that new building, not too long ago, right?
It's actually been longer than.
Hundred and twenty years.
But I, I'd be willing to bet the post office isn't gonna probably move from where they are.
No, and I'm just, but I'm just running through businesses, wondering if we need to have a spot for one, that's all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. Okay.
And I, I kind of have a question on churches. So how is that not permissible everywhere? Like, how can you, how can it be a special permit for church?
You can regulate churches, you just can't completely ban them, like so many, um, you know, in order to comply with the United States and Colorado Constitution.
You know, what, what?
Heavy industrial, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Right, but Bailey's, Bailey's asking, wh- why are, why is a church not permitted? You have to get a special use permit, right?
Special review.
Special review.
And we were discussing. Concerned, but that's not.
Volume of churches, uh, that we would be concerned of. Do we want six of one denomination? You know, within two blocks of each other, so, and that's why we left it as special use. Um, ju- just so we could kind of keep our eye on how many are coming through, just to keep it, I think, fair and equal to all denominations.
Well, and part of it goes back to that Town Center. What is the purpose of the Town Center? It's businesses. A church doesn't bring in, it brings people in, but not revenue.
Right.
So, that's why it's by special use. It's permitted in commercial, uh, professional areas. Light industrial by special use. You don't want it in, uh, heavy industrial. Um, and it's special use in plan development.
So why don't we want it in heavy industrial?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my thought, is if, you know, later on down the road, that happens, and it could be a long ways down the road, but you know, if somebody gets upset because, hey, they want that there, and we're like, well, it's not permitted. Just because it's a church and there's all the separation between church and state, I mean, is that something that needs to be changed?
All right, so what's your definition of heavy industrial? Let's start there, because we need to think, what businesses are going to be in heavy industrial? And do we want a church in the middle of that heavy industrial? And think about it in a safety aspect, not in a separation aspect.
That would, they would kind of be like Burnco.
Yes. That's more heavy industrial.
Yeah, put some more.
And a concrete plant, or who had a, a woodmill.
Right.
If somebody goes and buys open space next to Burnco, which would be no different than what the open space was here on the east side of Kiowa, and decides to put a church there.
Is it zone heavy industrial?
It is.
Is it in the town of Kiowa?
Well, it, it.
It's the county.
Yeah.
So this is, but this is where, if, you know, if somebody comes to, and says, I bought open space, because a lot of, what would be, could be annexed as heavy industrial, could be open space, okay? And if they go and buy a piece of open space, because they can do it, they could build it from ground up, build their building how they want. Really, we
Could it be.
From the freedom of, of the religion part, really, we can't. I mean, we could special review it. We could maybe have where we make sure traffic and everything else is, but we, we gotta be, we gotta be somewhat careful.
Wouldn't we rezone it at that point in time?
Yeah, because i- i- in.
So then it wouldn't relate to heavy industrial.
It does.
If we rezone that property. So, you have, and I, I hear what you guys are saying, but I think of it from that safety aspect. And as the caretakers of the town of Kiowa and its citizens, think of it as a safety item. In regards to, yeah, that whole area, if it starts getting that woodmill, all that construction, all those different things, heavy industrial going on out there. If I was a church, would I want to put something out there? Yes, I understand, and I could build what I want. But if I'm looking at the safety of my parishioners as the church leader, would that be the most ideal? Then let's talk about it if it was in town, as the town leaders, do you want, we have all of these other options, do we want to say, okay, yeah, we can do special review, but ideally, do we want them in a heavy industrial area? Because think about those kids, oh my golly gee, if I'm a little kid, get out of the church when mom and dad are busy chit chatting, look at all that great equipment I can get myself into. Not, I'm just trying to look at it all those different ways. That's part of our job is as a caretaker, and that's one of the things that. That's part of our job is as a caretaker, and that's one of the things that we discussed a lot of why. We made that decision. Now, we can say, hey, yeah, okay, we understand where you guys are coming from. And, you know, talk about it more, but that's how we came up with some of those decisions.
I get that. I, I guess my whole point was that there's just. There's stinkers everywhere and I would hate for somebody to look at this and then just say, oh, hey, you know what? They're not gonna have a church there. Well, like, that's against my rights, blah, 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 whatever, just. Dotting, dottingizing. I guess.
But wouldn't it be worse if we said special review and we de- declined them? I mean, then they would say discrimination more.
Yep, yeah.
I'm just gonna bring that up. Thank you.
So, I mean, I, I get where you're coming from. I know, it's a tricky one.
Back to the corner either way, you know, if, if, if you, if you lock it out and, and.
But we can explain it, you know, with our thought processes. If somebody comes, they had this on that we discussed. It's a safety item. We discussed that we can rezone it. If they, if they're bounty term and that's the best place, then let's talk about rezoning.
And, and really, it all gets soon as it becomes a church that likely gets rezoned. So. So what? Oh, is town center and heavy industrial. Anyway.
Well, I'm putting in. I just have a bad feeling about saying no. We don't want a church here. Because everything in me says that, you know. That, you know, Jesus would go where the people are. He don't care where they, where they are, he goes to them, right? And so i- if it's heavy industrial and they won't put a church here, then fine, put a church here. Or, you know.
But we could rezone it though.
And then, I mean. But that's the thing, is, is, okay, you want to put a church here, put a church here, but we're gonna go ahead and rezonate. But the thing, the thing is, is. If, if you say no, you can't put something there. Then that might shy people away from even asking if they can rezone it.
If they're called. To put a church someplace. If they truly are called, they will do it. They will come and talk to us if they're truly called. I, I'm a firm believer, if God is leading them to put a church someplace, they're gonna come talk to us. That's just gonna be a small piece of things.
And we have it in every other. Zone.
There's plenty of other options.
Yeah, it's just simply a safety thing.
I'm, I'm kind of. I'm kind of split on it because. You have some really good points.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And you have some really good points. I'm, I'm really split on this.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I, I, I am, I mean. If you build it, they will come kind of thing. I mean, and, and. I don't know, I.
If we take that aspect out, though, Ruth, what is the safer? Thing? That we're not discriminating against a church? I mean, is it better to say no to the high, high because? We're feeling, because it is, we feel it's a safety issue, and lots of heavy equipment, who knows? If that's solely what we, we're kind of based this on, so legally, what's the better way?
I mean, legally, as I said before, is. You have to have an area in town that has churches or religious places. As a permitted use, somewhere in town. Restricting other areas of town. You know, it's based on.
Review.
Reasonable and appropriate. Standards and special review, so.
They're not a protected group. Like a caregiver home or the sober living facility, and they're not a protected group. We're not, it's not as if we've discriminated against them.
Yeah, they are, they're more protected than anything.
Churches are?
Oh, my god, yes. I didn't mean to say that, but. But yes, they are.
So my, my kind of thought on it too is, you know, I, like I said, may not happen, but if it did one day. Like, we're setting people up in the future that we might not be on any of these boards. But if somebody wants to rezone, now they're jumping through the hoops of rezoning and paying the costs of that and everything else as a church. I just feel like it could get sticky. I don't understand why we can't just put it all of special review. Like, you know, kind of across the board and one permitted place.
You can't do it as a special review throughout town. You have to have an allowed use for a church. For a religious institute.
Yeah, that's what I said, and it's got one, one place that is permitted, but then the rest be under special review.
Because we have one asterisk now that says, uh-uh, no. And that's, and that's what we're talking about is the one asterisk. We're, we're having a big conversation over one little asterisk.
Ruth.
Yeah.
Um, I see where churches are protected under the First Amendment of the US Constitution and Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, but they are not in any way. A place of public accommodation. Under. Colorado Civil Rights Division.
They're.
We're not discriminating. We've got multiple churches in Kaua already for such a small rural town, so. Nobody could set a case that we discriminate against anybody's religion.
Right.
I mean, Joey and her. Snake church, maybe, but.
I think that's gonna be a stickier issue.
I just guess I don't, uh, in all due respect, I don't really understand the issue with. Having an SRU in commercial zone, I mean, who would want to build a church in a commercial zone district?
Oh, Ruth, why do you ask that question?
A lot of you will.
And the land might be less expensive because they're in that area, so that's probably why someone could look. But I'm imagining like the concrete plant and places like that and putting a church up. That's kind of what we got to envision.
You know, the problem with churches. For most municipalities and local governments is that. They have an inordinate impact and they don't pay their way, right? Because they're exempt from everything.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I say. Uh, we leave the asterisk and we wait to cross that bridge. Because. Even if they were to come in and say, hey, we would like to build in this heavy industry. We, I mean, we, we all, we have options. We can talk through this. We can. Explain to them what our thoughts are. I mean, worst case scenario, yeah, we have to rezone it, right?
Mm-hmm.
To avoid any more hassle.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I mean, that's just my thoughts. We, we keep it as it is, and if we cross that bridge. We take care of it, because that's what we're supposed to do.
I mean, we can have a church come in and want to rent the school. That happens in Douglas County all the time.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, want to talk about church and state right there. So you can have a church come in and.
And that's so misunderstood.
True, yes. I, it, whatever it is, whatever people want to make it. There is a lot of. Other thoughts on it, but. Why do we want it in heavy industrial?
I can tell you why, we're, to my point of view, and I, and I get the. Um, the, but the reality is. Right now where Kaua is, unless we flagpole annex something in.
Mm-hmm.
We're probably not in near future gonna face anything with heavy industrial.
Mm-hmm.
This will probably go through another revision between then and now.
Probably a couple of revisions.
But I like the fact that, you know, the, the, the interesting thing is, you know, we're, we're leaving, we're leaving the door open. If somebody really does want to go, hey. We know that this is a heavy industrial. Development, and we want block one, and we want to build whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, that, that door is, is left open. So from my standpoint. From a town trustee. I've now walked through all that logic with you.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And I, I'm, do I agree hundred percent with you? Not, I mean, I'm like you, because you don't agree a hundred percent with it, because you see all sides, right? But do I think today is probably the most logical decision? Not, maybe not the best emotional decision, but the most logical decision, absolutely, and I support it.
Okay.
Okay. There's a, there, there's an out, there's a, there's a, as, yeah, if, so, and. Once, I mean, if they're bound, you guys looked through, I understand you guys went through a lot. If they are bound determined and we've come to that point, then we figured it out before this even goes any further.
Yeah.
Because that's what we do.
And obviously, we're not saying no, because. We're. There are options.
There are options.
No, you gotta give us the chance to spit, like, if they come to us and say, we want to build in a heavy industry, industrial. They have to hear our side first.
Yeah.
You know, and hopefully that. Sweats them to say, okay, now I understand why you don't want it in heavy industrial, but I still want to build there. Then at that point, you gotta be like, okay, we need to rezone it, do whatever we need to do, because we know exactly where this is gonna go if we don't.
Yeah.
But then it's stuck with the fees of the rezoning and the taking longer, that's my point.
Mm-hmm, but could, could that be waived if we decided to waive it?
And it, and is that, is that what we base our rule on, is avoiding them fees? I don't think so. I think we base it on what our best judgment is.
Mm-hmm.
And that's.
Hey, just so you know, because we have everything third party, we don't waive anything, the town pays it. The town in the end is gonna pay it all. There's no way of waiving that. Because in order to get them through the process, we have to pay a third party that we contract with to do it.
Right. So.
So now, we're paying for that instead of just changing it, is my thought.
Yeah, so why not just say it's okay right now?
So.
Is it, because we feel it's safety.
The, the big thing that I think everybody's tied up is the difference between asterisk and the S. And if you go through the S, you still have to go through special review.
Yeah.
If you have the asterisk, it appears as just a hard no. If you get, and, and here's the thing, with all of them, if they want, if the church wanted to buy this building right here that we're sitting in. And they'd still have to go through a review to get to rezone.
Mm-hmm.
All land that is acquired by a church. To be used for that has to go through rezoning. And, and it's just, because nothing, there's no. There's no lots that are out of the gate zoned for religion.
Because does that pull it off the tax rolls by that rezoning?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, you know, if, if we want to go through a special re- review, I mean. My word, I wish we could have stopped any and all extra government acquisitions of buildings in Kaua. Because since they bought the bank building, we lost X number of dollars in tax base. Then if they buy this, we lose X number of dollars in tax base.
Yeah.
We had a house, then they leveled the house. We just lost more tax base, so. Um, anyway, that's a bad sidebar, but something to think of.
No, but it's something to think about.
So, I, I guess, so. From here and from this group, and I understand Bailey's concern and Jonathan's concern, and. And honestly. The asterisk to S, I don't think it's, it gets you guys in a jam, because at the end of the day. For it to happen, it has to go through that process. So I don't think you're backing yourself in a corner by making a church an out, a, a S always or on that spot instead of the asterisk. At the same time, if you leave it as an asterisk Bailey, I could tell you that. They still gotta go through that deal to get it rezoned, because, because there's nothing that's zoned to be religious to begin with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that information.
Yes.
No, because, no.
We're gonna.
No, no changes.
No. There's not, we're not gonna make an adjustment on that. But the board can make some decisions, because they can make a choice. Do they table it for tonight or take it to their next board meeting, so they can have a long-winded discussion like we've had tonight amongst the board?
Although you have, you have, you have a quorum for the board, right?
So the board can make a decision. Yes, so the board could make a decision tonight, but that's their decision, not our decision. Our decision is here.
And this is what we're presenting to them.
Yes. So. And then the natural medicine and review of definitions, uh, we're all good with. Those are all things that we've gone over.
Yeah, okay.
Just so you guys know, I think we, we really did try to consider like. So we don't get an overload of, you know, like automotive, all in one block or something like that, so. Those are also things we were taking into consideration for respect for the businesses that are already in town and to not. Do stuff that might. Take away all their business and have them, you know, lose business. So those were considerations too, and what we decided.
So basically, that moves us from. Us doing stuff to now you guys doing stuff.
Oh.
To determine if you guys are gonna move forward with this tonight, or if you guys are gonna. Table it and take it to your next board meeting.
Well, I was just looking at the need, need definitions for the following. Marijuana, medical marijuana dispensary, grow, et cetera, is defined by Carlos St. Mal.
And Ruth, you have those, you have those definitions, yes.
Yes, and the, the definitions that are actually in the code we adopted match the recommendations of the board.
Yeah.
Same with caregivers and the other concerns that were articulated by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yep.
Now, you said something about. I, I heard somebody say, and I'm gonna go back to something here. I heard somebody say something about residential and, and living. Like. Your residence, right, is not allowed in town center, is that right?
It, it should be in the residential coding, is.
Right, just not the non-resident off of the non.
It was just in the wrong. Place.
So if. You know, so if somebody lives in a storefront. Is that?
That's, that's defined, like if someone's living in the town center, they have to have a certain amount of business space.
The what, similar to what we were talking with, with Joey?
Caretaker.
The caretakers.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, because longevity, she has a business out front, she has a caretaker. Over in the back. Um, the bar. Caretaker lives upstairs.
Got it, okay. I just was.
Yeah, so they're covered, sort of situations are covered.
I think it was a little good, there's six businesses down there in Kaua. Where they all lived in the same building.
Mm-hmm. And then, and that's old towns type stuff, the caretaker stuff.
Mm-hmm, what was next to what Patty had, the least of that was a liquor store.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And they lived in the back of that.
Yep.
Yep.
And it's still. Permitted in, in coding, there is, it's in the definition, we did review that.
Yeah, under the caretaker stuff.
What?
Okay, so you guys are bringing this over to the town board now, correct?
Yeah, so, so you actually have. How did it work?
Yes, Ruth, go ahead, Ruth.
I, ideally, I would like them to just make.
A motion?
Yes, ideally.
All right, so do I have a motion to board this onto the town board with the following adjustments? Fire station moving to emergency services. Uh, and changing emergency services for town center to an S. Uh, and a definition added for wireless telecommunications equipment based on state code.
And we addressed the issue of. The restaurant bar, which is how we got back here.
Yes. Yes, because the only problem is they didn't have the second page. Um, at the last meeting and now they have the second page for restaurant.
Well, thank God we did that right, okay.
And the only thing, adding the police. Our ambulance definitions underneath emergency services.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
And adding a definition for emergency services. Do I have a motion for all of that?
I have a motion.
Okay, Sandy's made a motion.
I second that.
I have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, board.
This is six to zero. Okay, so now it's handed off to the board board.
I guess. I didn't retain a motion at this point, oh.
You need to open it up, cause it's an ordinance, you're formally reviewing an ordinance that's been tabled.
Okay. Since the mayor's not here, at this point, it's a public hearing, ordinance. Number thirteen, series twenty twenty-four, town of Kaua, Colorado, an ordinance of the town of Kaua, amending the town. Kaua zoning code table of non-residential uses group homes, natural medicine, marijuana regulations in town of Kaua, sorry, it's more having. This ordinance was tabled at the regular meeting, L. October eighth, and we're now reviewing it here.
Any discussion or public?
In a public.
All, all, nobody's here.
All of them are getting in line. Any other discussions, Bailey?
Um, I don't have anything, but I do wanna just thank everybody for all of your hard work, because. I know you guys have put a lot of time and a lot of energy, so regardless of anything I've said, I do appreciate all of you very much.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion.
We just got a small taste of what's coming. I didn't retain motion at this time.
Sound move.
Yeah, I second that.
Second, are there any further discussion? I'll let you roll, call it up.
Okay. So. Mayor Pro Temp?
Yes.
Okay, member Shaker.
Uh, yes, with the with the amendments.
With the amendments, okay. Board Member Howard, yes. Board Member Wyland.
Yes.
Okay, it passes four to zero. Okay. All right, so last thing is, uh, and this is a Ruth thing, response to Albert County Water Master Plan. So go ahead, Ruth.
This is really directed at the Board of Trustees, but anybody's input is welcome. Albert County recently approved, and Kim can probably add more than I can. A water plan and really didn't include the municipalities or. Look, reach out to us or look to us for any input and appears to be very partial. And so. What I'm looking for is a motion from the Board of Trustees to direct staff to. Make a response and provide some input to Albert County on their water plan. And I think Elizabeth has done that. We have a copy of that. We can distribute, and if anybody on planning and zoning is. Interested, we welcome that as well. It's, you know.
It's like two hundred and sixty-seven pages, so I can send a link to it if you would like.
Yep, uh, Board Member Howard made a motion.
Yeah, get it done. I'll second that.
Uh, motion and a second, all favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes four to zero. Okay, any other discussion?
Do you guys have any other business?
Nope.
All right. So I make a motion to adjourn.
I just said thank you, that's all.
Oh, okay. I make a motion to adjourn our meeting at seven fifteen on Wednesday, October sixteen. Anybody opposed? All in favor, of course.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks again, everybody.
Thanks, and then I'll have to resign it.
Thanks, what's up?
Thanks, you're representing me.
Thank you.
Thanks all around.
Thank you, everybody.